This is your one-minute warning. Okay. Yeah, there you go. They don't improvise in my gavel. I don't know what to do here.
Ken, I think you need a cowbell.
All right, I now call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order at 5:31 PM, and I'll have our coordinator call the roll.
Oh, we gave you the one that doesn't work. Okay. Okay.
It worked.
There you go.
Mr. Dixon, Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Mr. Scavano.
Here.
Mrs. McCullough.
Here.
Mr. Segal.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mr. Scavado.
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We do not have any public speakers tonight, so I won't need to read through the instructions on that. I think Rod, and Rod's in the back helping with the broadcast, so thank you, Rod. Oh, there he is. All right, okay. Thank you, Sarah, for being here. So I will move on to our -- I'm going to take the liberty, since this is kind of our first meeting, to say a few things about the Committee of the Whole and thoughts that I've thought about. First question we need to decide, is everybody okay that I chair this, unless there's any objections? Is that all right? Okay. All right. I won't be here for the next one, so Tim's going to chair that one, so, all right. We, and I do just want to hit some highlights. This is for the board members' benefits. One, I do, we do have an agenda planning session prior to this, so that we put the agenda together, and tonight's agenda is kind of limited, because we wanted a practice run. We do not actually vote on anything in the Committee of the Whole. That's only done at a full board meeting, and even items that are not expected to be approved should still go to the full board, so that you can vote yea or nay on it. We still can use special subcommittees whenever we need it, and we would appoint people to be on that, and they would probably have a defined start and end time. It has been suggested by some board members that we, during presentations from administration, that we hold our questions till the end of the presentation for efficiency purposes, because oftentimes that questions might get answered as the presentation goes through. So I would just ask, if there's a presentation going on, and you have questions, write them down, take a little note, so that you know what you want to ask, and won't forget that, which is what I'm going to do. I ask you all to monitor your own airtime, to allow the others to have opportunities to speak. And so that's, those are my highlights. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Jared, who's going to walk us through the first item, which is the first sample PDSA process.
Right. Thank you so much, Ken, and I'm bringing this one back, because I'm trying to get a unanimous vote. No, I'm just kidding.
We're not, we are not bringing this back.
We really felt like we needed three different examples. We wanted to have an example of a recurring contract, and we thought one that was fresh in everyone's mind was good. We have someone here that's going to be talking about new business, and we can see how the process plays out for vetting new business, which is largely what you'll have here. The first example is very, very rarely, if ever, going to come to the Committee of the Whole, but I want your feedback at the Committee of the Whole on that, to make sure it makes sense. And then finally, you're going to get to get a sample report. We've committed that virtually every meeting during the superintendent's comments section will have a report, and so we will be able to see that. The first thing, and Brooke is going to be quarterbacking here for me, and kind of walking through on the big screen, so we have visual aids to go with this. But the first thing you'll notice on this is, we have reordered the executive summary. And this was done with feedback from the cabinet, but also really trying to listen to the board about a more storytelling, coherent approach to the executive summary. So you see the problem listed, the background, alternative choices, so what were the other options, the solution, the total cost, how we will assess it, the opportunity cost, and how will we be reporting back. What you'll see with those categories will be, that is a summary of a very, much more elaborate PDSA process, which Brooke can show you as an attachment right here. So what we've created is a Google sheet that we can take the PDSA document, and it spits this out, and when you have something as a board, this is going to be the very detailed version. You can see the executive summary is truly a summary. There are only about eight areas, and those same eight areas will be what we cover in presentations, when presentations are relevant. What this PDSA does is go through all of the aspects of the PDSA that we selected. So you can see, now we're on to contract details. Now we're on to the implement, questions as pertains to implementation. How are we going to assess? And you can see, some of this gets pulled into the executive summary, budget details. So you get the idea. This is, what we would expect you would do with a recurring contract, or with new business, is read this. So prior to the meeting, you can read the whole thing at your leisure. At a minimum, we would want you to read the executive summary, which is pulled directly from that PDSA. And then finally, we're going to give you an example, if we ever were to do a slide deck, which we will not always do for recurring contracts, but we will work during the agenda planning to see if it's needed, because I think we need to set some limits today at board meetings and at committee meetings. I don't think we want to have a scenario where every new business and every recurring contract has a slide deck associated with it. So what we want to do is kind of be intentional about things that really need extra explanation having a slide deck to support. So if you, if we click on the slides, you can see that this is the new slide template, and we'll get a chance to look at this slide template on all three presentations today. But again, it's reflecting the executive summary, the problem, the background, alternative choices, the solution, total cost, assessing the situation, the opportunity, the opportunity costs, you know, what else could we have done with the money, reporting back, what are you going to hear from us? Those will not necessarily be only eight slides. Some presentations may need five or six slides per area to do that, depending on the complexity of the topic and how many things we're bringing together. But at a minimum, those will be the basic slides. So the slides will mirror the executive summary, and we will not be reading the executive summary to you. The slides will be adding further illustration, and we're going to do some really intensive cabinet training, number one, for directors and above. Number one, how we could build that slide deck properly, and two, how, once that slide deck is built, we can effectively present and tell the story. So those are the three elements of a recurring contract. There's the full-length PDSA that will always be available. There is the abbreviated executive summary, which will always be there. And in some cases, if there's room in the meeting, or if we feel it's a particularly expensive or complicated topic, and we'll get feedback from the board on that, there will occasionally be slide decks to support recurring contracts. I'm sure we can all think of examples where a recurring contract is expensive enough or controversial enough, where further elaboration is needed, but it will not be automatically done. So if you pull something and say, where's the, where's the slide deck, unless we had a conversation on the front end, we aren't going to create one for recurring. What we are going to try to do is always have one, or as much as possible, to 80% accuracy with new business, and reports will also follow that. So we wanted to start the conversation with you seeing, this is not about Maguire Woods, because we've already done that business. It's about the three documents, being introduced to those. Then you're going to get another rep of seeing what it looks like for tonight's LEGO proposal, which is new business. Then you're going to get a chance to see a report, where we're not asking you to take action, but you're going to see that the report follows the similar eight slides. And our real ask of you tonight is, one, to vet the LEGO proposal. We do want to move that forward to the board, and to have you vet that. But two, give us feedback, are these the right, is this the right format? Are these the right questions? Does this give you the information you need to make high-level governance decisions with recurring and new contracts? And is this the right format to tell the proper story with the reporting calendar? So does that properly frame this for everybody? Now I turn it over, and comments on the recurring contract in any one of the three templates? Or do you want to get the reps on the new idea, the LEGO contract and the report, and then give us feedback at the end? I'm comfortable doing it either way.
David? Mr. Segal?
I guess I would prefer to get the reps in and see the whole format go on our maiden voyage. I do have some questions, but perhaps they're going to get answered just in the process of presentation.
Okay, thanks.
So I understand the need for brevity, and, but when I look at the slide deck, I should be able to tell what it means. I'm sure that I'm the only one, but where it says reporting back, for example, on this one, it says, "18 was successful, 19 improvement, improvement expected, improvement put in the contract, improvement," what does that mean? So if you're going to put a word in there, it needs to be comprehensible as to what it means.
Right. What we're going to be balancing is, as we put one that's officially going out, we're going to be balancing, points being just a prompt for a verbal presentation, so we would not expect slides to stand alone. Your executive summary in the PDSA is going to provide all that context, so what we are going to attempt to do more of is not have the slide deck be something you can read, because the problem with that is then presenters will tend to read it.
Right.
So instead, these will be high-level bullets, or in some cases, photos, or images, or graphs, or charts, or different things that enhance the executive summary in the PDSA, but they will not, they will not necessarily stand alone, although certainly this one could, is something we could take more time to improve. This was just more to throw out just what the general template would look like.
And I'm, and I meant generally.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, I don't expect sentences or anything.
Right. Yep.
Because I can go back and look at this template and see what will improve, as you say that, but...
Point taken.
I just had one comment under, under the PDSA, where they talk about, where you talk about strategic priority. Question number one is, how is the new initiative or contract aligned to our strategic goals? And then how will it impact students, whatever? So in the LEGO one, there's a nice example there of how it's going to impact students. So I would just say that in answering that question, when your team is putting this together, if it's going to affect growth and achievement, or financial, whatever, give us some examples of how you think that that will improve growth, you know?
Exactly.
You know, or, I mentioned this to Aaron earlier today, on the, on the Maguire Woods one, probably finance is one that would, that lobbyists would have the most impact on school funding for us.
Right.
So that would be an example, to me, of how it would connect to the finance strategic goal, so.
Great, great point.
Just suggestion. Mr. Connor?
Two things. One is, to the rules of the road, my one suggestion on that is, I understand about the questions, and that sometimes you ask, and it's going to be answered. My feedback, and I gave this to Dr. Jared, is that you really have two things. One is a real question about the content on something, and the other would be either a comment or issue-oriented, and I would tend to agree with the issues, et cetera, that that weight. But for me, my only feedback is, sometimes it really helps me, for an actual question, what does that mean, and so forth, to ask it at the time. That would be the only counter-suggestion. I mean, the rules, if those are the rules, that's fine, I'll follow them. I'm just saying that...
We have special rules just for you, Mr. Connor.
Well, yeah, that's right. Exactly. Thank you very much.
All right, okay.
Yeah. All I'm saying, suggesting, though, is that if it is a true question on, you know, because sometimes, you know, if it's 10 slides, and it was slide number two or three, there's a lot of water under the bridge, and, but anyway, the other thing is, on the Plan Do Study Act, this is really more of a question. Will there be, you know, maybe other materials referenced sometimes, depending on the topic? So as I read through this, some of it, you know, you have the word "general details," and I thought, and my example is, maybe there might be a hyperlink or another document or something that sometimes you refer to, and I thought that was part of the intention of the Plan Do Study Act, so that it, for example, where it says, what is the problem on this one?
On the executive summary? Or on the PDSA itself?
I'm on, I'm on the PDSA.
Which kind?
For the LEGO or Maguire?
I'm sorry. I'm back to Maguire on the examples. Sorry, I thought we were still on the examples.
Yep, we are.
That if I look, because if I hear the questions correctly, there might be some more details.
Yes.
But the purpose of Plan Do Study Act is not to articulate all that, so you might have another document or something.
Correct.
From this, that will explain more detail, right?
Some of these will have hyperlinks embedded in them.
Yeah, okay. So that... Okay, on this one? Okay. All right. No, that's, yeah, that's right. Okay, I just, I was, this is more clarification. I wanted to make sure I understood.
Okay.
So the way this is going to work is, the Plan Do Study Act is going to really act as the outline, and then if there's more detail behind that, it will be point by point.
Yep.
It could be, you know, a document, it could be, frankly, another slideshow, whatever, so that we reuse materials. Okay, thank you.
As needed, we'll use hyperlinks.
Okay.
And I would say, for us, as we do our homework, you know, the few days before the Committee of the Whole meeting, that if we have questions in any of those, that we can get those to Dr. Jared on Monday, so that he can have his team ready to, you know, do the follow-up and respond appropriately and be prepared.
I had thought that the number of, and I think after, this is something to think about at the end of today. Today, essentially, we didn't really do a presentation. You're going to have two full presentations. So as we go through the timing of two presentations today, we'll have Susan's presentation and Kelly's presentation, let's get a sense of what the proper number should be for a meeting tonight. Ken actually thought of a lower number than me.
Three.
He was thinking more like three. I'm thinking maybe it's, when you look at new business alone, that's going to be three or four items most of the time. So I'm thinking, and adding a report in, I'm thinking we may need to have it be five, but just, any, whatever number we kind of settle on as a general guideline, A, we can always change it, once we've tried it, and make it less or more, but B, we just want to have ongoing feedback from you about the length of meetings and the proper time. And we'll all, even when we don't present, remember, we'll always have the PDSA and the full executive summary, and be available for questions, even if we aren't doing a formal presentation. So it's not like we'll skate by on the ones we don't present. It's just, there will be a different level of focus with an additional presentation as needed. So with that, any other comments?
Mr. McCullough?
So one of the things that I've been anchoring for is the study piece on recurring contracts. So a nice thorough presentation of, you know, what we got out of it, basically. And I'm looking, I just was looking at the Maguire study part, and there's like two things, and it said, basically, we had a successful year, named two items that we were successful with, and continued legislation benefit to the Rockford Public School District. I am hoping that that will be a robust area of the study on recurring contracts, because they're going to bring it back to us to approve a second time around. I mean, we've got data to show us whether it was good or, you know, successful, and if you don't have data there, that's part of the study, you know, or if you don't have good, good outcomes, but you still want to do it because you need another year, because this, that, or the other. And I'm speaking for I, but that is something that I'm hoping that we are able to really ascertain, because so many of our contracts in the past, we've just, we just renew them, but it's a three-year contract, you know, so we just have to do it, but, you know, do we have to? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
One quick question.
Sure.
In terms of the actual, because you were talking about having the materials ready, is there, obviously, there's the schedule that you published. If there are some things that might take a little longer, is there any kind of thought to having, if you will, drafts ready at certain points? And, you know, because I can imagine, I'll pick on transportation, that, you know, there's probably, you know, standard things that you're going to publish, and I'm wondering if you have certain thoughts, if you will, and you're working on it, would the expectation be that you will publish those kinds of things when you hit, you know, some material point?
Yeah, I think there's going to have, there's going to be two mechanisms. One, when we laid out the annual calendar, we've tried to be intentional about some, like when we're doing a big overview of a 10-week school improvement cycle, or we're doing our, anything related to strategic planning, we know that those meetings are going to have to be very intensive on the reporting, and we're going to have to adjust accordingly for our expectations about other items. So that is going to be something we absolutely will have to take into consideration. The other mechanism to control that will be, meeting by meeting, planning with the board president and his designated board rep that's joining the planning meeting, will walk through those problems of practice per meeting to get a sense of timing on a meeting by meeting basis as well.
It'll be a learning process, I think, you know?
Yeah, we're going to have to get better.
Okay.
We pray change.
We are, I know. Okay. And if it doesn't work, we blame Dr. Vosberg, so.
So it'll just be like a regular cabinet meeting, maybe.
All right, so we're going to have a presentation on LEGO next, I think, right?
Yep, now we're going live.
All righty, okay.
So we want to give, we want to give...
How does it feel to be the first?
Sure, is this a sacrificial little alternative? Great, thanks.
Make sure that mic is turned on, okay?
It is.
Okay.
So here, for our maiden voyage of new business, is Susan Urim. She serves as our dean of elementary math, and our example today is about a supplemental opportunity for kindergarten and first-grade students. So we're going to begin with an introduction, a video introduction, to what it is we're bringing forward, and then she'll go ahead and move through the PDSA presentation.
Okay.
Are we excited?
I once tried to make a robot, like one that actually moves.
I tried to make a plane.
I like build a big giant one, like.
Well, I had to make a boat out of tin foil. It didn't work as I planned.
So I had to improvise using another piece.
That helped me learn that you can use different stuff to make different things.
And then it turned out better.
They just all turn out really cool, no matter what it is.
Try this smaller gear.
Can't do it, it's too hard.
If you make a mistake, you learn from it, and then you can make it right.
Just try a different design.
Usually go through a lot of trial and error.
Keep going, never give up.
Keep searching.
It's like the robot is not going to be able to fit.
All the way to go straight and then come back.
It's cool that, like, everyone's different, and how they have different abilities. If everyone's thinking the same way you are, you can't really come up with more ideas.
We were adding like parts that wasn't on the manual, and it actually worked out pretty well.
When something does what I wanted to do, I just feel like I've won something.
I thought only high-tech people could do that. I didn't know that I could.
Even that could be used.
Even that could be used.
There's a lot of things I'm curious about in the world.
And animals.
I'm still curious about flying.
If what I was building were capable of anything, it would be to like solve sicknesses like cancer, or like editing DNA.
It would be a robot that would take medicine to kids who are sick in the hospital.
It's not like the end of the world if you don't do it like how it's supposed to be. It's like even better if you use your own imagination.
Hello, everyone, Kelly Briggs here. Today, I will be talking about the top seven key differences between LEGO and...
Nothing like automatic play.
What was the other one?
There you go. So, um...
There we go.
There we go, we got it. Okay. See, this is like why we need that dry run, right? Okay, so, as you saw, those were some of the LEGO products that we're talking about in LEGO Education. And last fall, I was asked to attend Conklin Elementary School. They were having Discovery Center come for the day, and they brought some LEGO simple machine kits. And so I went into a third-grade classroom, and I'm watching the kids, and they're super excited. And I turn around, and there's the teacher, and, you know, as she's picking up her jaw, there's some tears in her eyes, because she's looking at the principal, and they're both amazed. Some of their most naughty, off-task, usually removed from the class, kids are involved and engaged and collaborating and building, and super excited to be doing all of it. So we watched that happen, and I went across the hallway, and I watched another teacher who's one year away from retirement, watching her kids do and interact. And another kid was saying, you know, "I've never seen Mrs. Smith smile like this before." It should happen every day, right? So, we have a former student, Aganze, who's talked to us about how he really took upon himself computer science, and excelled at it almost in spite of us, not because of our support through curriculum. And I also, kind of putting these pieces together, and I asked around, and what's going on with these kind of things in our district right now? And we have some miscellaneous clubs, we have some few things going on, but ultimately, it's the 21st century, and we have no robust cohesive way to build computer literacy, starting in the early grades. And we need to have that for our students and for our teachers. Like I said, we do have some robotics clubs, and really, they're all very dependent on a teacher being willing to stay after school and run the program. There's no cohesive learning, professional learning going on for them. We have teachers on donor's shoes, asking for kits for their classes and for after-school programs, but none of these align to our curriculum, none of them are done in a cohesive way, none of them provide equitable experiences for our students, and equitable opportunities to interact with these early computer science experiences. So in thinking about, you know, we saw LEGO in action, but what, there's got to be other things out there. We did look at other choices. There's tons of things in there that start really early for coding and little cool gadgets and stuff, but what they didn't have was that creative collaborative aspect, and they also didn't have something that would go from K to V in a very cohesive way that would build skills, and also familiarity for the teacher's sake. When we talk about learning a new platform, you know, a LEGO has familiarity. I can't think of somebody that I can say, "Oh, have you ever heard of LEGOs before?" And they're like, "No." So everybody has something to come from, and you should see, I put out a couple of kits in front of some teachers, K-1 teachers, and the eyes light up, and they're like, "Oh, yeah, this would be great, my kids would love it." So when we looked at the other choices, it really didn't get down to cost, or they didn't, it was not comparing apples to apples. It was really looking at lots of bits and pieces that would require learning a lot of different platforms in a very uncohesive way. So that's why we arrived at LEGO. LEGO does attend to our four Cs of collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, and communication, and also to the ISTI standards. The International Society for Technology and Education has standards for students and teachers. And LEGO aligns with both of those. The LEGO program also is a great bridge from our high scope going on in early childhood, where we're talking about a lot of peer collaboration and communication, and we're building on that. It would also be the program where we could then launch kids ready in secondary, when they start middle school, for higher levels of coding and computer science. This solution of a partnership with LEGO Education would be in line with Goal 1, Strategy 1, with curriculum alignment. We've gone through this curriculum design process, we're rolling out an integrated literacy curriculum that really puts together all these different elements of literacy with inquiry and collaboration. And even more importantly to me, myself is Goal 3, Strategy 5, with the facilities and technology. Our kids deserve relevant, robust, and dynamic materials that just bring technology as a part of learning, not as something extra bells and whistles. This is how we learn. During this first year, our target audience will be the K-1 teachers and students, and we're looking at kits that then would build through fifth grade. So where they end up right now in the scope of K to V, we're not sure, but we're going to be able to build, starting with some very simple ones. Our request, our request today is for $17,000 that would support the professional learning to build internal capacity to support our teachers being able to implement these in an integrated way with our curriculum. It would entail a year-long partnership with LEGO, where we would have eight to 10 internal people who would commit to becoming certified LEGO trainers. They would also be committing to providing an agreed-upon amount of professional learning within our district. So that's what we're looking for. The materials themselves have been purchased through Title I. We purchased enough kits for every willing teacher in K through 1. It's not mandate in any way, shape, or form, but if they're interested, we have enough kits for everybody who wants to try them. And then we have samples, 50 samples of several other kits, that we would like to be able to get teachers interested in, and being able to try them in their classrooms, so we can know what's working and where it would be appropriate for our student body. Our timeline would be something to this effect. In September, actually, in Institute Day, there'll be a first availability for K-1 teachers who would like to attend a three-hour opportunity with a LEGO trainer and myself to learn how to use the kits, to be able to take them back to their classes, and begin the process of implementing and aligning to our curriculum. They do come with extensive lessons aligned to our curriculum that talk about cause and effect, and collaboration, and all kinds of other things that we want going on inquiry. We would be able to take from September to February, during that time, to try the kits, get feedback, watch the kids do them, get teachers involved in that feedback loop, so that in February, we would be ready to build that internal capacity and figure out what will the professional learning entail here in RPS? Will it be an extended, you know, hybrid kind of professional learning? Will it be a session to come and get information? But we need to plan that out, so that by June, we're ready to roll that out, and also work with I&amp;I to decide what can be purchased to further the program, starting in September. Regarding return on investment? The return on investment through this purchase is rooted in equity for opportunity for our students. We'd like to invest in the additional supports that are highly engaging and relevant for instruction. An anticipated outcome over time will be increased numbers of traditionally underrepresented subgroups, demonstrating an interest in computer science, and being exposed to that kind of coursework and the pathways, so that we hope by the time they get to secondary school, they have more of an interest in Computer Science Project Lead the Way and other courses that have been developed. Short-term, we're really hoping that, you know, through these kinds of experience in the classroom, we're going to boost engagement. If we really want to raise student achievement, we need engagement. We need engagement from the students, we need engagement from the teachers. These are materials that will really help do that. Currently, as I look around, and I've looked at some of the different MAP scores going on, some of our highest-growth classrooms are experimenting with elements of curiosity-based and inquiry learning, not particularly necessarily with LEGO, but this kind of idea. And we're seeing that it is an approach that changes learning for students and for teachers. This LEGO would allow us the consistency to be able to do that across grade levels. Actually, I'm going to go back to that, sorry, just for a second. I would, what we're hoping for is during this first year, that we're estimating that 50% of the K-1 teachers would have enough time and interest to participate in training, to be able to implement with their students, so that during the next year, that we would get closer to that 80% to 100% involvement and implementation. I'd like to be able to come back and tell you in February what our plan is, and how things are going, and what kind of reaction we're getting from teachers and students, and what kind of growth we're already seeing from that. And to be able to come back at the board in May, and all, we will all play LEGOs together. It'll be so much fun. I know you're full of questions.
Okay.
Go.
Are we ready? Who would like to go first? Mr. McCullough?
Why, why is our goal 50%?
Well, I had to, I had to shoot for something, and I had to be reasonable with the idea that integrated literacy is a new curriculum map for elementary teachers this year. I don't have the ability to say, "This is what you must do." I would love it if it was higher, and I would encourage it to be higher. I would never stop at 50%.
At what point does the district have the ability to say, "This is what you must do"?
Because this is not part of the core curriculum, we're experimenting as a supplementary material. We have it as grant-funded, which is inherently supplementary. And so, and we also want to make sure that we're honoring our success in the past by saying, "Here's a new idea, let's start with who's really interested, let's watch that be successful for teachers and students, and grow organically from there." We've seen some early success with that in, we dabbled in some play-based learning for kindergarten classrooms last year with some marketplaces, and we experienced that as well, that when we offered it as an option, and we really provided that training first to those go-getters, it spread more quickly that way. So we anticipate at least 50% of our teachers, we've had some really positive feedback so far, and if we're able to go beyond that quicker, then we'll be able to support that with our internal trainers.
If time were not of an issue at all, I wouldn't anticipate every kindergarten first-grade teacher wanting the materials. It's going to come down to some, some of us are going to have to make some choices for the teachers in terms of what PD they can attend, and how thinly they feel like they're being stretched.
And the PD that's being provided Institute Day, will it be provided again? Will there be online, I mean, anybody who can't attend there because they have to choose a different PD?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, I've already said to a couple people, you know, like if, that doesn't work because it's a menu on those days. I will come before school, I will come after school, I will come during school, we will figure out a way to get you the learning that you need. And I definitely am on board with doing something hybrid, where if they need to be able to watch and read some things. The people who even attend Institute Day, I'd like to see them be able to get in a Google Classroom and collaborate, and say, "Well, what's working, what isn't working, what questions?", without having to always come face-to-face. So I think that's an important component, yes.
And so why is it called coding? I mean, is it, are the young ones doing actually a movement piece, or are they just putting together items, or, how's that?
They're, the initial STEAM kits that we have actually do not involve a moving part other than what the students make move. However, there's a second kit that we can start having available as early as first grade called We Do. And there's an app on the iPad that is a Bluetooth connection to what they call a hub. So the students have pictorial directions, and they can put together a hub, and then on their iPad, coding is the idea that I'm putting together a series of steps. One forward, two back, three right, four backwards. And then I'm sending that signal to the hub, and my robot does what I ask it to do. So then I start to think about, what are the different things I can ask it to do, and how is it going to change my directions? So those things can start, Heidi and I were able to get a sneak peek of some of the stuff at LEGO that will be rolling out, and some of that is going to be as low as kindergarten in the next year or two.
So the kindergartners are doing what with it, then?
So their, their kits, these STEAM part kits, have moving parts, and they have, like, you saw some of the kids like balance and things that go off. So they have cards that are pictorial directions, and the teacher has prompts for how they're going to introduce, and what do you notice, and what do you wonder, and how are we going to try this? And they spend a lot of time looking at and experimenting with how the parts go together. So then they have something they're going to make, but then they have a challenge, well, what if? And they've got to kind of go through these ideas of, if I change this, this happens, so I'm going to change something different, and something different happens. And that's that idea of cause and effect that's going to lead them into the coding.
And the next thing, and you know, one of the things you hear about from elementary is that they hardly have enough time in the day to get through all of our other pieces, and science is the one area that is really, and I'm kind of, because of the STEAM aspect of saying this is sciences, because obviously, if they're reading and understanding directions, that's also literacy, but, but that is one of our weakest areas, and we really don't test it, right? I mean, we don't have, do we test anything in MAP, or, I mean, we really look at literacy and math, and so that's an area that is under, underrepresented in elementary.
But I think you said it well, though, too, those skills come through in literacy, and they sure shouldn't do in math. Because it's the kids who can problem solve and think critically that will blow the test out of the water, and show us 100% growth, because we saw it this year.
Exactly, and that's what I'm trying to say, is the interface with this will really help in those other areas, as long as our teachers see that. Do we teach keyboarding at all?
Some, some students, yes.
We're going back to cursive, right, this year? Didn't you tell me?
Yes, we do have a state mandate to bring cursive back into the curriculum, and we have resources to do that. We do not, at this point in time, have a mandatory keyboarding lesson or course of study for all students, but we do offer computer applications as part of the wheel in middle school, so most students do get keyboarding as a part of their wheel experience, starting in sixth grade.
But by then, they're so good with their thumbs, they just don't know how. So then my, and then my last question that I wrote here was, so what is our plan for transitioning into secondary school? You know, you're bringing a program forward, starting K-1 up through 5, and then are we waiting until we get it through all those 5th, and then having some transition? Do we have things in place, do, are we planning? What is that next step for the middle schooler?
I would say the closest thing we have in place right now is after-school mindstorms and robotics clubs. Whether that can become a part of what happens, but I can't speak to any of that. I mean, I don't know from a middle school perspective.
So where we began with elementary was really looking at our essential learning outcomes from our core curriculum, and asking, "How does this fit?". And so what we have now is a plan, really, for K-1, with then some space for field testing in grades 2 through 5. And we'll follow that same protocol moving into middle school. Where does this fit, and how can it be aligned with essential learning outcomes to have equity of opportunity for all students? Because what we do know is that children are very interested in the concepts behind computer science when they're quite young. And then by middle school, we've, females in particular, their interest has significantly dropped. And so we want to make sure that we're able to leverage all this opportunity that they've had in elementary school to carry that through in middle school. Exactly when that's going to happen, I don't know yet, this is our very first start. But when we invited LEGO in, we asked them for their full continuum of products and what they offer, and we saw a lot of possibility, especially with the next-generation science standards and our new curriculum, to be able to pretty seamlessly integrate that at a minimum into their science coursework. And what we hope, then, is that we'll see increasing number of students who are interested in science-based fields and math- and math-based fields choosing their academies by the time they get to their sophomore year.
Well, and I'm just going to skip... And this is 10 years ago, personal experience. My kid left the district because we didn't do a lot with computers. And, you know, I keep thinking, and that was even at a high school level. I mean, we had an A-plus class. We had what? We had a couple of classes. But it is the way of the world. And so I see grabbing it here is really important. But that next step is how do we make that as part of our whole pathway? So, thank you.
Ms. Segal? So there will be 10... Train the Trainers? Or 10 trained trainers?
Internal support.
So we have, I'm guessing, around 90 kindergartens, 90 first grades? Is that about right?
I have... Last count, I have 70 kindergartens.
Will there be 10 for kindergarten, 10 for first grade? Or will there be 10 for kindergarten and first grade? And if it's for both, is that number going to be big enough? It seems like it's a lot of classrooms for... Over a large geographical area for 10 people to do the training.
Right. And that's... It's really our initial step into how do we build this ability to support learning throughout the district? So these 10 people, we ideally would like to be representative of the K-5 this first year. And they will be trained on all the kits by LEGO. And then together with LEGO, we develop the presentation and the process of professional learning that would happen. And that's why it's really important that these people understand this isn't just like, you know, come attend the training and then we'll give you a gold star. They have to go forward and be ready to be the face of this in the RPS district and support it. Because we have to create that little army of people who can then support growth as we go. But those people, then, can grow. We can take those 10 and make them 20 or make them 30 or make them site-based. You know, we can do a lot of different things with it. We need a seed of people, though, to begin with.
Okay. In Slide 8, where it mentions return on investment, equity, engagement, and learning, is the equitability improved just simply by introducing robotics and coding to more grades than are currently being exposed to it? Or are there particular groups that are being introduced to this program? Or does that not make any sense?
It's completely adult-dependent at this point in time. So there are some after-school clubs, if there is a willing adult, and some funding, usually through a PTO or something, to get the kits and have it up and running. Or, like in the case of Mr. Dobek at Hillman, he has his kind of own innate motivation to bring more computer science to his individual classroom. Aganze motivated himself. He began learning computer science as a way to help him stay interested in math because he was struggling. So all of those are kind of singular events. And what we want to do is have a more systematic support so that it happens during the school day and it's not just for some.
Mr. Rollins?
On the fiscal impact. So the total, the ask right now is just 17,000, but you already spent the 61.5. I'm just curious why this wasn't brought together, brought to us in one bundle?
Timing.
Okay. So then the other question I've got, and looking at the total fiscal impact, just sort of follows up on what Mr. Segal was asking about. So this is just a proposal to train the trainers, but then the trainers have to come back and train. And is there a fiscal impact to that?
Within their original contract, I'm proposing that they are responsible or they are committed to six days' worth of training to deliver. And then beyond that, I... You know, I mean, but this is all kind of... You're in a gray area only because these are thoughts right now of how we could proceed. I would like to see that then there's some possibility for a contract of compensation for them beyond that initial commitment. But I don't have, obviously, any legal leg to stand on to say that that would be what we can or can't do, but that's just some ideas I have.
A really good start for us, though, is the new opportunity to have Institute and SIP days and be able to offer consistent PD on those days as well. So we'll start with a brief three-hour session at this year's Institute Day. But then we'd like to be able to highlight teachers who are doing this in their classrooms on our continued SIP days and Institute days so they can learn from each other. And part of our squad for really showing that off during that time and offering more training will be these internal certified people.
Thanks.
Yeah, I got several questions. Number one, while I'm thinking on it, help me with the mechanics on this. So for next year, we said the goal was 50%, was it not?
Well, we have supplies for everyone who wants to try it.
Right, but the goal...
Our expectation is that, you know, not everybody will be able to do it right away.
Sure. But I'm just, in my own mind...
Yes.
As I say, I'm trying to do the math. So for all the elementary schools, we are targeting 50% participation across kindergarten and first grade. Is that correct?
That's our hope, for a minimum.
And when we do this, will we track or, if you will, target schools? So, I mean, obviously, you could have 50% at, you know, all concentrated in certain schools. And what would be the response? And have you planned for how to roll that out?
Well, I think once the dust settles of who's raised their hand first and who hasn't, we can easily cross-check that. I take it as a personal responsibility to reach out to... If there's a school that's not represented, I need to figure out why. What's holding them back? Is it a communication issue, you know, or what it is? And I need to go and figure out how we can bring down those barriers and get somebody there at least trying it. So I see your point and I think it's important because it is... It would be easy for one whole school to just fly under the radar and nothing ever happens and then our equity is out the window.
Yeah. I mean, I think if you look at Slide 5, where it says that we're really trained for that growth and achievement and we're... Obviously, one of the things we're after is equity. I think, I mean, my opinion is that we'd have to think, at least to some extent, about something at work... We always talk about, you know, who's your customer? You know, who are we marketing to even internally? And I would think you'd have to put some thought to that because the goal of the equity and the goal of having volunteers, it's not that they're... They don't exactly conflict, but it doesn't necessarily work in the way, I think, on the planning. So I think that'd be one piece of feedback is I really would want to make sure... And seeing representation from the teachers, I think there is no doubt in my mind that... And I'm sure you've probably done this, but, you know, have we engaged the teachers to say, you know, a note to the membership before the start of school to say, "Hey, we're going to be looking for people..." Now that I work in marketing, of course, I look at everything as a marketing problem, right? You've got a hammer, everything's a nail. But I really, you know, that is one of the things as I read this and I see your goals, I suspect that how you market this and the engagement with staff is going to be part of the picture, I assume, on the planning.
Our initial experience and observation is that teachers are hungry for this kind of support and consistency. And if we can point back to last year's experimentation with marketplaces for play-based learning in kinder, I personally called every school and asked each principal to speak with every kindergarten teacher. And I think we had two classrooms or three classrooms across the district that truly just were not interested.
But never a whole school?
Never a whole school. It was maybe three classrooms across the whole district having personal conversations with each of them. And so if that's any indicator of kind of our openness for this kind of thing, this really will take it to the next level and be an on-ramp into more systemic K-5 programming.
Another marketing point, if you will, that by having this part of our integrated... We have lessons that are ready to plug into, what are your essential learning outcomes? What are your learning targets? Here are the lessons that align to that. This isn't a rainy-day activity, a Fun Friday activity. This is how we learn and this is a part of what we do and how we do it with our kids.
Well, that was going to be one of my questions, so thank you for answering that in advance. And then that will lead to my next question, which is, I assume we're going to go and have the numbers to say, "These folks were a part of it, these weren't", and then look at the growth and achievement, I assume, on that dimension. So... One question on Slide 6 is... So you mentioned this was grant-based, which I understand there's always a risk to that. Is there a thought that if this is successful, how you would plan the fiscal out for years 2 and 3 and so forth? You know, what would be the impact? Can you turn it into something that's not grant-based? Or what are the plans for longer-term?
Well, we're in this kind of initial exploratory phase of, you know, really aligning with our core essential learning outcomes and then field testing in grades 2 through 5. We can stay firmly in this supplemental world of grant funding. Should we decide as a curriculum department that this is now a part of our core curriculum, we would then need to adjust the way that we plan for it. But it would become, then, a core instructional resource.
And do you think that the criteria would be, you would know that by year 2? Or would it take longer, do you think?
That's a good question. I mean, I would like to think that if we can do K-2, 2, 3, 4, or 5, that by the end of the second year, we would be able to project out to year 3 and be able to know that what it would take financially to sustain and how is it enveloped into our core curriculum. So I'm going two years, I know.
Okay. So that seems like a reasonable target. So a couple of questions on the choice scene. One was what criteria... Because I heard what you said, but I wasn't clear in my own mind the criteria of the LEGO versus, you know, Littlebits, Codesters, BeBot, Wonder Workshop. So that would be... The first part is just to understand the criteria that generated it. And then the second is... And I know LEGO is very popular, but what kind of background checks do we do on other districts that use either those programs or the LEGO?
I'll do that one first. Waukesha is one year ahead of us in this. And so I've met with their K-5 STEAM Coordinator/ Director. I can't remember the title. But she basically reaffirmed, but also actually liked some of the things we were doing better based on their experiences. So trying to... And then also asking LEGO. LEGO tells us, like, well, districts have tried this, districts have tried that. They've been very... Waukesha is very successful in rolling this out. They're going to be entering year 3 in this STEAM rollout for the K-5. So in that respect, trying to figure out what people in the area are doing and what LEGO suggests in terms of they know developmentally how their kits are made. Take me back to the first part, though, that I skipped.
The criteria that...
All right. The criteria. Yeah. I mean, so basically, we wanted something that was going to incrementally build these computer science skills in a way that had some kind of cohesion. Like Codesters, for example, is an online thing that we can pay for and the kids go online and move things around and make things happen. It's fine, it's cool, but it doesn't have that collaboration aspect and it doesn't have a creativity aspect that the LEGOs and the visual tactile feel.
So if I might interrupt and I apologize. So your explicit criteria was, say, collaboration.
Yes.
And when you went through, you said, "In advance, oh, it has to be collaborative, et cetera. Oh, this one is a 2 of 5. This one's a 4 of 5." So I'm not saying that's what you did, but the equivalent on the criteria.
And really aligning with our new essential learning outcomes as an additional way for students to show their learning.
Okay, so each one of these were mapped against that and then the fit essentially was evaluated. Okay.
Okay. I have two. I think Mr. Rollins was kind of hinting at this one on the future cost, you know, what, you know... And I suppose it would, I mean, do we have to buy more kits? And do we have to have more trainers and all that kind of stuff as the program evolves? I'm assuming that's a yes.
Well, yeah. I mean, that's an ideal world. This is going to go really well. It's going to be well-received. The kids are going to respond, not just emotionally the way they want, but academically the way we're hoping to. So with that in mind, the trainer aspect isn't going to incur more costs because now we've built that core to go from. It really responds more back to the kits themselves and being able to provide more kits so that, you know, every classroom has equal opportunity. And that's where Heidi said, you know, at this point, we're able to use grant funding because we're building it. And if it becomes part of the core...
My point is, will in two years, are you going to come back to the board and say, "It's going great, but we need another $200,000", or something like that?
Potentially.
Potentially, okay.
We say 300 and...
If it's working. The sec, my second question is, did the LEGO company provide you, and this was kind of related to Mr. Connor's question, you know, some studies from current users on what had been their, what wins did they have? You know, that school districts that had used it, you know, showed X percentage of achievement, whatever. Because we, as Mr. Escobedo always says, how are we going to know that this is one of the tools that we need in our toolbox to help us close the achievement gap? And so have there been school districts that have been, I mean, this product's probably been around for quite a while, so you would think someone maybe has published a study showing success that can be a case study, I guess.
Yeah, the LEGO website itself, or LEGO Education, does have multiple, what they call testimonies, but they also refer to different research that's been done. So, I mean, I looked through it. I don't, do you want me to refer to a particular?
I'm just asking you if they provide you with that information, okay?
Absolutely.
So that it helps you to decide that this could be successful for us. Okay? Go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot to ask this. Is this, from the business standpoint, I assume LEGO, I mean, they're big, but if you read about them, there's a couple of different things about them. They've had some changes in management. Are they committed to the marketplace? And do you know how much, you probably didn't ask this question, but as a side note, is how much R&amp;D they're putting into all this? Because, you know, usually, if, if you're evaluating, and this is not all software, it's off or hardware, but if you're evaluating technology at all, you say, you know, what's your marketplace and what are you doing for R&amp;D? So that, you know, presumably in three years or whatever, the product is better, they're committed to it.
Well, we were invited behind closed curtains. Did have to sign non-disclosure agreements. We did get a chance to preview, and there are teams of people working on awesome ideas that are, will be evolving in the next few years. You know, LEGO Education is a slightly different arm than the retail.
Right.
And judging on what they're also building in terms of resources for teachers online, it's not just a lesson plan. I mean, it's very dynamic with videos and all kinds of resources for teachers. I'd say that it's, it's a firm commitment from their point of view, and I feel confident.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, I'll make mine real quick, because I think, I mean, I can speak about this for hours. I've spent some personal time coaching Mindstorms teams, and it's been great. But what I was going to go with this is, I guess I second the conversation about equity and making sure that if, after this initial phase, the assessment, and there's data to prove that educationally-wise, this is paying off, that we have a plan, that this is going to be rolled out, and not just at elementary, but the following phases, and there's a plan for all schools, that regardless of whether those three classrooms are not going to participate, that this is standard in our district. Three classrooms are, is, you know, 60, 80 kits, and we're not, they count. So that was one comment. The other was just the mechanics of this. So there's going to be a lot of kits lying around through our schools. Are we doing a good job nowadays, operation-wise, cataloging, archiving software kits so that, depending on how it's used, so that if, if we do a good job, we can reuse and be good storage?
I would hope so. I mean, I know everything that comes in will be catalogued unmarked, and then the distribution list will be kept for where it goes, so we have a paper trail of where things are going as they go out to schools. And then I'll be, you know, following up with teachers as far as use. But, yeah, I mean, I would definitely feel like these need to be items that don't just disappear under a table or out the door, because it is an important investment for us.
And then the very last quick, actually, feedback on the PDSA is the slide number seven on the timeline, because I think all of my other questions were answered, but so that's a good start of a timeline, and I'm sure it means a lot to you guys. But when I just see a timeline with months and pictures, it'd be nice to have a little more detail, just in general, for future. An implementation plan with a little more details would be?
Okay. Ms. McCullough, you have another question?
Wait, comment. And this is a fiscal comment. So I hear that what we have to buy is the kits. I read in here that the app is free and will hopefully remain free. So our investment is the kits and the training. And then, once we have people up to speed in the district, that we can train the trainers sort of situation, right? And then, you know, with regard to LEGOs, there's got to be a whole bunch of us with bins and bins of LEGOs to donate, kind of like, you know, we did our old instruments when we were doing the instrument drives, so. There is the problem, that's sort of.
Okay. All right. So great, great job. Thank you. So the next step would be, this would go to a full board meeting for, for a vote?
So what our suggestion is, is that in order to maintain the process of this being a committee of the whole, that we would expect action is not ever taken as an up-down, and it's always, it's always informational, but serves as a first reading in this case. So then we would bring it forward, and then the board would take action at the, at the first regular board meeting. So our expectation is that action is never taken at the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. So we have a report tonight from Dr. Munson on the parent focus group.
Good evening. I'll go ahead and get started, and then as we fix our technical difficulties, we can follow through with some of the visuals. But I just wanted to state that tonight I get the opportunity to share how our focus groups went with our parents in the spring, and wanted to say how amazing the experience truly was. I was able to attend all six of our pilot focus groups, and although I was not invited into the room for the focus groups so that we could truly keep it a confidential, open discussion, I was able to be onsite, spending time with the children who were onsite with me so that their parents could attend the focus groups. And I can say that the energy that flowed out following each of the focus groups was really impactful. So although the focus groups lasted 90 minutes, most of the parents at all of the six of the schools stayed after just to continue the discussion and ask further questions. And so I thought that was just a tremendous experience for our parents who were able to attend. So the rationale behind it is we really wanted to have a different venue for parents to come to the table and have a deeper discussion on how they feel about particular topics. So every year, we give an annual survey, the five essentials, to our parents, but often it's difficult to hit that threshold, to gather a report, to see how our parents feel about particular areas as far as school safety, as far as culture and climate and the environment, leadership and curriculum. So we wanted to try something alternative and partnered with K-12 Insight, who already does our Let's Talk and our engagement survey, and brought them in to facilitate this 90-minute session for our parents. We chose six schools, and those schools are listed, and we'll bring them up in the slides in just a minute. But we chose six schools, and we fostered this conversation and allowed parents to speak openly about how they felt about particular topics. Then K-12 Insight went back and took all of the information and put it together in a report, one for each school, and then the district report that you received here. So now we have our technology up. Okay, I'll speak, I'll talk to the topics. So the six schools that participated are listed, but they're Spring Creek, Nelson, Rolling Green, Lathrop, Ellis, and Swan Hillman. We did these again in a 90-minute session in March, and were able to share the data with all of the schools in May. And then we anticipate that they'll then share and celebrate the feedback that they received and make some improvements in their school improvement plan coming in the fall. We were able to translate and offer translation services for all of our schools, and so we had translators who could translate in Arabic and Spanish, and our parents took the opportunity. I want to celebrate that partnership as well, because through the translators, we were able to truly invite a lot of parents that have not been able to attend, you know, groups in the past. And so they made some personal phone calls and some home visits to encourage different populations from across our community to join us for the discussion, and that was exciting. The areas that we focused on were academic support, student support, school leadership, family involvement, and safety and behavior. So there were specific questions that were research-based that really got to those topics. And as you can see from this particular slide, we took all of the feedback and came up with some areas of strength across all of our six schools and some deltas, some areas that we'd like to work on moving forward. A more descriptive analysis of that is in the report that was attached tonight from K-12 Insight. So they have a summary of our group discussions, and it goes through each of these areas in more specificity, just to say how we fared as far as those 54 parents who were able to attend the focus groups. And again, each school had a more specific report that isolated the needs and the strengths in their own school. Are we up? Not so much. One question was asked, and it was sort of an opening question, and that was just what word best describes my, my child's school. And I have to remind us that in March, we had just unfortunately undergone another school shooting within our nation. And so as you can see, safety was really first and foremost on the minds of those parents at that time. That is reflected throughout the report. But I thought it was fantastic that although that was an area of concern for them, one of the areas that they found that they were the happiest or the most satisfied in all six of the schools was that they felt that their children were safe within the environment that they were in. And again, these are six schools across our organization. So I thought that was really fantastic. It was an area also that they want us to focus on and be conscientious of moving forward. So what are we going to do with this feedback? We want to continue to gather feedback from all of our parents across the district. So one thing that we're going to do differently is we're going to look at the survey that we provide to parents. And if you recall, in the spring, you approved a additional relationship with K-12 Insight to give a different survey on school quality. That allows us to focus on very specific areas, especially in the area of school safety and leadership, and it allows us to create our own window and offer different ways and modalities for parents to engage in feedback, so they can fill out their form pencil and paper, they can fill it out online, and we can extend that window so that we can loop it over school activities and events and across parent-teacher conferences. So we're going to ensure that the things, the themes that came up in these parent focus groups are highlighted in this particular survey to see if they are themes across our entire district. So we're going to utilize that in our, to focus on climate and culture in that feedback, or the feedback strand that will come out of that survey that will come in the spring. In addition, as far as the safety, we will be partnering with Fred Deal and his team to ensure that we're looking at safety audits across the district throughout our school year. So we're going to do that through the strategic auditing process and ensure that we're really taking this information and isolating it and making any changes that we need to throughout our schools to ensure that we're really meeting the needs of our parents. You do have, in here, as far as reporting, we created a continuous, a cycle of continuous improvement in our engagement survey in the fall, and we'll do that again with our engagement survey, but we're going to replicate this same process with our parent feedback in the spring. To ensure that we're looking at this feedback, we're really talking about the feedback, we're absorbing the different themes, and we're using that information to drive change in our schools and improvements. So we're going to implement that same process in the fall. So you will hear back from us three times about this feedback. So we will come back to talk about employee engagement, and that will be on November 6th in the Committee of a Whole. So we'll talk about how we did looking at last year's data to this year's data, and our goal is to make a 3% increase across the district. The five essentials survey, which is our state mandated survey, that will be for teachers and students, and we'll come back to talk about those results on May 7th. And then the school quality survey that I just referenced, which will be focused on parents with a little bit more flexibility for the scheduling of that survey and the modalities, and we'll talk about that as well on May 7th. So you'll have an opportunity to have some conversation and to really look at what our trends are over the year and what we can do to ensure that, that consideration is put into our school improvement process and highlighted in our strategic focus. So that is it. The purpose today, again, was just to come and share our feedback about the process, to share what we're doing with the feedback that we are bringing out from our community, and again, to gather feedback about this process on how we present reporting to the Committee of a Whole. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Mr. Connor?
On the slide, oh, hey, there's no number on that, on six, okay, seven, on the, the one with the words.
Yes.
Are those all the words that you got?
Yep. So what he does, this is called a Wordle.
Yeah.
And what they do is they take, they isolate all of the words in frequency. So safe is a word that was utilized most frequent, and then some of the words around. So these are themes. Usually, the criteria is that it's a word that is said more than twice, so a word that is repeated.
No, no, I'm very familiar with it. My question was more, what was the data set? So are there words that are missing from this?
The data set as far as, these were words that were stated throughout the focus groups. So through all the dialogue of the focus groups within the 90 minutes across all six.
So if somebody said the word, no offense, terrible more than once, is that on here or was that off the list? So that's why I'm asking, what was the data set? Because for the ones you're reporting, I totally get it, but I wondered if there was...
Frequency of terms. My understanding, but I will confirm this with K-12 Insight, is that these were the terms that were stated most frequently, but I will ask the specifics of how things were determined to be included or eliminated.
That's right, because I think that's the one thing that, as I look through the list here very quickly, I always, I mean, one of the games we play with this is, you know, go find the smallest word, you know, and, and patterns and so forth. So that would be my one question.
And he'll be able to tell us the frequency. We did this similar activity in the engagement survey, and so they're able to state exactly how many times the word safe was stated and how many times the word supportive was stated.
Right, yeah, yeah. The methodology, I'm not questioning. I'm questioning, what I want to do is make sure that, whether it's good news or bad word, news, that it's all in here and proportional so that we see that. I think that's, you know, and I don't know if K-12, you know, did some self-selection on that, because I'm not seeing many negative words here, and I'm a little surprised, maybe. So that's all. I just want to make sure that this is a complete data set.
I will confirm, my understanding is that these were all of the words that were stated when asked the question that one word that describes my school. But I will confirm that information.
Yeah, I want to make sure. Then on the solution side on slide nine, it talks about monitor school safety through the strategic auditing process. Is that the process that, because I don't remember what the name was, of the current process of what we do for the safety? So this is just incorporating the current standards we have so that we've got baseline?
Actually, this is in addition. So we already do have some things that we are doing to monitor the safety protocols in our school. But now, in addition, with our four process auditors through my team, we're going to be doing regular, weekly, and frequent audits throughout the year. We're going to incorporate safety audits in addition to what we're already doing to ensure the safety protocols are present in all of our schools.
Okay.
In partnership with Fred Deal and his team.
Yeah, but, okay, so this will be one data set, if you will. This new part, then, so this is new, and then you're going to have the existing and put them together. Okay. Then the only thing, in, in terms of the continuous cycle, so I remember when we went through kind of the SMART discussion, and we have similar, it looks to my eye almost like a similar timeframe, but does this, you know, coordinate with that at all?
It does. It coordinates and overlaps with our review cycle for our entire district. So it hits certain time periods where we're reviewing a lot of our data. So the scorecard will follow the same framework in the engagement survey and now the others.
Yeah, so that's not different.
Correct.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. McCullough?
So I'm looking at the PDSA piece and the recommendations there, and having read communication being, you know, an issue both in language as well as volunteerism and, but, and I see some, something here about robocalls. Clearly, under the language situation, they don't understand it because it's not in their primary language, says that audit the procedure for identifying the primary language, but it doesn't even say, I mean, somehow we have to address if parents aren't understanding our robocalls. And, and then there's, so I'm not sure what, how that is being, is in here. And then the other one I see is that I didn't understand was provide schools with an alternative number for robocalls so parents can let the message go to voicemail. So could you just kind of...
Sure. So the robocalls are the calls that go out that are computerized, and some go out across the district. Very few robocalls go out across the district for everybody, but that might include a reminder of registration or a snow day. And those do go out in English. There are also robocalls that schools can put out to their own school about specific school-based information, and my understanding that when possible, they do those in the native languages of the schools. But at this time, that is accurate. When we do our, our district-wide robocalls, they are not in multiple languages.
Is there a reason that they can't have it? And, you know, I can hang up because I heard it in English, but they know that Spanish is coming next, and what's our third one? I mean, we can't do all, but have we looked into that? Because I do hear that from families across the district, that they didn't understand. So, and clearly, that was an issue, and so I don't know what the follow-up on that is the act, so.
That was feedback that did come from two of our parent populations. I will investigate that. I don't know what our past practice is regarding the languages. Heidi, how many languages do we speak, have in our district, off the top of your head?
We have recorded about 67, but we suspect that there's actually upwards of more than 100 when you think of some of the, you know, singular dialects, et cetera.
So maybe...
You know, and in this day and age of technology, I just guess I could hear, you know, press one for English, two for, you know, I have to do it at the store for what I'm going to...
At this point in time, they are self-recorded. Yeah, they are self-recorded out of our communications department. There is one individual who does record those live onsite. Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not aware of, I believe we would have to record those in different languages ahead of time. So I will, we'll look into that. I don't know what that process would be for doing that in multiple languages.
All right. Just being inclusive.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
And then the, I didn't understand the alternative number. Did you respond to that? Because I...
Alternative number.
An alternative number for robocalls so parents can let the message go to voicemail and access it when they are, assess it, access it when they are...
So my understanding is at the end of a robocall, you can, you know, there are certain numbers you can press. So you can send it to your voicemail, you can, there are certain things you can do. I believe the request was to do different robocalls in each of the native languages. That was my understanding of interpretation. Okay. It was right there. For the district-wide, there's one, we do one robocall.
Couple of questions. And obviously, for the board's assessment, we need to hear from our community and our parents on how we're doing as a district and whatever. So my first comment, comment was, or question was, why only elementary schools? And is there thoughts about doing parent focus groups for the secondary schools? Might be harder to get parents to show up for that, but, you know, are we, are we thinking of that?
As a pilot, we chose elementary schools for accessibility. You know, that was, that was one of our general thoughts. My hesitation right now is that although we, I felt we did our due diligence, you know, over a month period of time, we invited parents in writing, we invited parents through calls, we invited parents in their native language. We had individuals like our translators go out and do home visits or make personal calls. Principals did amazing things like bring in students and celebrate and invite, and we isolated certain parents and did personal invites. And even after doing that for about a month's time, we were still well below our anticipated outcome. So we really wanted about 16 people per school, and we had 54 parents show up totally, you know, in total. And so I think we need to reflect on that and see what we want to do, knowing that that was our outcome. Is there something we can do differently? Is there something that we didn't do to invite parents to the table? I would love to hear from the board and also from the schools about what else we can do to exhaust our efforts to ensure that we truly are listening to all of our parents across the community. So we don't have a plan, this was done as a pilot, to collect feedback in a year where we really didn't have a strong parent voice for our strategic priority conversation, but I, we don't have a plan to continue it and... I, we don't have a plan to continue it until we have a different idea on how to truly engage parents and get them to the table to have the conversation. And principals were there, every single principal was at the school and was involved from the beginning till the end of the process, as well as a lot of our community partnerships. The YMCA Discovery Center and my team came forth to really invite parents, and we fed everybody, everybody had food, a full dinner, we had childcare, we had scheduled activities. So we did so many things to really try to bring parents to the table, and in two of our schools, we only had two parents show up. And so it was...
Disappointing.
It was, it was a bit disappointing.
Sure.
It was a bit disappointing.
And I know that there are people who are not going to ever commit the time to go for 90 minutes and sit in an evening session or whatever. They'd rather fill out a survey or whatever. But my second question is actually going to be for Dr. Vossberg.
Excellent.
Under the disruptive behavior heading, I just found it really interesting that the parents were telling us that suspensions don't work, that they, that it makes harder, they miss class time, making it harder for them to understand future lessons. Parents recommended that schools use a disciplinary system that keeps the students in school, focuses on what was wrong, and some restorative justice component, which is, would be to me like, you know, community service hours or something like that.
Peace circles.
So I'm just...
Mr. Rollins is ready with those.
Okay. So I'm just, I just want to hear your feedback on their feedback.
Sure. Well, it is 54 parents, and I'm not sure if all 54 parents stated that.
Right, yeah.
Or if it was a couple.
Right.
I'm a parent, too, so, um, definitely want to see kids in school, definitely want to use exclusive disciplinary practices as a last resort. I think we do that. I think our data over the last seven years has shown that. Our focus is always going to be making sure that we have environments that are conducive to teaching and learning for students and teachers, and, you know, I think if you visited the schools, you'd see that. So I think, I think that's where our focus is going to be.
Okay. Any other board questions or comments on the report? Okay, thank you, Dr. Muntz and. Any other business for tonight? All right, great first run. I'm sure this will be the shortest of all of them. Okay. Okay, so, so our next committee of the whole will be August 7th, first Tuesday of August.
Is that going to be our standard time, is the first Tuesday for this?
The standard, yeah, standard time is the first Tuesday of the month.
Oh, okay.
Brooke, and there, and there were two months where July was one, and then February, is it?
Okay.
October, okay. All right. And then, was it February that there was going to, we were going to do more than one? Okay. All right, okay.
Those cruel and unusual punches.
Okay. I was thinking that there was some connection with the budget stuff in February or whatever, so. All right, great job, everybody, and we'll adjourn, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Move in a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who wants to stay? Okay, no, no. Okay.